I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting together. We need roll call too, don't we? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
John Mill. Councilman Tibbs is pre-excused. Councilwoman Bench. Mayor Protem Clark. Councilwoman Moore. Councilman Bryant is absent. Councilman Balls is absent. Councilman Humphries.
I'm here. I'm way down here. I'm way down here.
And Mayor Browning.
And according to my notes here, I'm supposed to read the audience rules, but our two guests in the back there seem to be behaving themselves very well, so we're going to move this.
Can we move to just ordinary rules? It would be appropriate, wouldn't it?
No, I think right now we are at our committee of the whole. And management update.
Thank you. Most of the meeting will be your discussion and sort of a working meeting. I'm going to just give you a brief update of what the committee has been working on, which included Councilman Humphries, Councilman Bryant, Councilwoman Moore, and Mayor Browning. So if you recall from the strategic planning session that we had in January, one of the items to finalize was the mission and vision statement for the city of Saginaw. So we formed the group to work on that and reviewed a number of examples and reviewed the findings from the strategic planning session, the document that was produced by our consultant. Talked about what we saw as the city. We also had a meeting with a number of, we called them Saginaw immigrants, or people who moved to Saginaw from other cities and received input from them. And one of the outcomes of that meeting was a suggestion by one of those attending that we do a word map to get additional input. Councilman Bryant was an advocate of that as well. And our IT department put that together and it is included in this presentation. And really, we utilized that word map to put together these statements and core values as well. The mission statement put together by the group, and we'll go through these as-is that we put together as a group. I know I received one revision, and I'm sure that will be discussed, the discussion portion of this meeting. But as our working group had put together, the city mission statement, "As the city of Saginaw is committed to providing high-quality services to ensure an inclusive and safe community in which to live, work, learn, and play." And again, that was sourced from our discussions in our strategic planning session, as well as input from community members. And this is our word map that I mentioned, was a suggestion by one of our folks that was invited to the discussion panel. And we did get a number of responses. And diversity and inclusiveness were two of the largest, or most frequently commented traits for the city of Saginaw. So those are included in our core values. Core values that the group put together, diversity and inclusiveness. We appreciate and value the uniqueness of each individual. We treat everyone with respect and dignity. Service accountability and responsiveness. We put our citizens first by establishing measurable performance goals, recognizing achievements and responding to needs. And unity, collaboration, and teamwork. We form effective partnerships that maximize resources and deliver high-quality services across the community. And finally, the vision statement that the group worked on was finalized as, "The city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community by promoting neighborhood growth, stimulating business development and innovation, fostering entertainment and educational opportunities all through strong collaborations and private-public ventures." And with that, Mayor, we'll turn it back to you for a discussion of the council.
Council, you had a chance to review this, I hope, and we would look for any thoughts. So why don't we start right up at the top? Let's go right back up to the top of the city's mission statement. And anybody has any comments or questions or anything on the city's mission statement? John Mill.
Of the material we have here, the city's mission statement seems like the most likely thing to use. Do we have planned uses for that, like heading press releases with our mission statement or incorporating it into our stationery or the website? How will we use this?
Well, that's part of what you can discuss tonight and determine. We won't make decisions tonight, so there can't be any votes, but we will use it as directed by council.
If we incorporate what we decide on, then we should be using that. It'll be on our webpage, and it'll be on different documents that we have, depending on what the situation is or what we're replying to. But this is kind of the foundation, you know? This is what we want to operate. So that was my thoughts on it. So anything else, John?
I think context is important.
Are we on TV for the community to see tonight? Well, then I would share with the community that this is a document that's a work in progress, that we started on this after the January strategic planning session with the idea that what we had come up there was perhaps too specific. And John, to answer your question, I think what we wanted to do was come up with a framework that we, as city council, could adopt and develop goals and objectives to reach that -- because this is being adopted as the city council's statements, but also that Tim could take back to his various departments and say, "Okay, this is what city council sees as our vision, as our mission. These are our core values." And that the departments could then say, "Okay, recognizing that, then let us set these goals and objectives within our department." The measurables that would let not only the manager say, "Yes, we're doing the job based upon the framework that's been presented by council," but then would also let us say, "Are we achieving these things?" So I perceive it as being across the board. This is something that will guide the city as it does its business, that will guide council as we make our decisions. And then frankly, I would love to see the community rally behind this and get behind this concept of commitment to quality services, inclusiveness, and safety, and in particular in the vision, pursuing the various things that are set forth in the vision. You know, I'm not sure that the city has had anything like this in the past. This kind of would serve to bring everybody together under the same tent, so to speak. We all know what we're working for this way.
This then needs to be presented to all commissions and boards, so that they know what our mission, our vision is, so that they can appropriately conduct their boards and stuff to meet these goals also. So all the boards, so everybody's on the same page, so. Question, any other -- go ahead.
A couple of comments. Just obviously, we want to try to keep it short and sweet, but I wonder if there would be a difference in the commitment level we're talking about? If we use the words, instead of high-quality services, use the words "the highest quality services," it raises the issue of what is our level of commitment? Just high quality is great. The highest, to me, is better.
So are we at a point where we want to...
Focus on each one of these three pages and work on them, or are we still talking generally? Because I can do the same thing. I got rewrites.
I'm not sure at what point we need to do it, but it seems to be now.
Well, we're at the first part. The first part is the city mission statement. Now, John had a great general question, and I thought that was great, but we are on the city mission statement, so I guess we're at that point now. So if I'm hearing you right, Mayor Protem, instead of high quality, you want the highest. What does that mean as a councilperson when you say the high? Not high, but the very highest. What does...
Well, the purpose that I would suggest is that to me, the mission now shows that we are looking to maximize. We want to commit to the public that we're going to do the absolute best we can, not just the high quality, but the most. It may not be, it may be a difference, well, that's the word, a meaning without a difference, but I think it's a little bit of difference. Pardon me? Well, semantics, but how committed are we? Are we committed to the best or just good?
We've got the high, the high quality. So you're saying that instead of high, it should be the highest? Or is there another word that's higher than the highest? You know, but I'm just...
I'm just asking that.
I know.
It's a question of degree. So if we're satisfied with high quality, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it at all. It's just a question, would it be better to say, ramp it up just a touch? I don't know. Thoughts?
But I think if we convert the word "high" to "highest," we have to have some sort of modifying word in there. An English major could tell you what the right...
It would be "the highest," as we're saying.
Yeah, providing the highest quality services, or providing the highest quality services possible. Yeah. And I think, you know, we want to give the highest possible service, quality service we possibly can, but I think Tim would say, "You know, I got this restriction called a budget."
Well, and that's exactly, because if you put in there the highest quality service, and then there's going to be an argument coming up very shortly here in a few months, is that you're not doing the highest, you're just doing, you know? So that's the possible. I like the quality service possible. I like that, because there are some limits that we just...
And I agree with that, and I don't disagree with that. You're right, there are limits.
So if we change to providing the highest quality services possible, I mean, is that what we're looking at? And is somebody taking notes on this? Madam Clerk, you are taking notes on this?
I'll probably discuss the data with the law on this.
No, no. So what, I mean, council members, we're in the first portion here, recommended through discussion here, "The city of Saginaw is committed to providing either the or highest quality, you know, service possible to ensure an inclusive and safe community in which to live, work, learn, and play."
Are we perhaps stating something that is implied?
You can't do the impossible. We're going to do all that's possible. So when we put the word "possible" in there, is it redundant?
Yeah, well, thoughts? Thoughts? Oh, go ahead.
I don't, I'm not disputing that. But what I, I guess, when we started this venture, like we said, we started it with hopes, and we knew we were going to get it critiqued. So when we talk about possible, let's be honest with ourselves, how much are we giving? Okay? So if, I know that all of us up here are giving the best we can for what we got to work with. So I guess to me, I like the way that Floyd, that you indicated, you and John, because we are going to be working up, and we are trying, we are giving the best that we can. And when we can give it, we are telling people, it's just not there.
You have the word "committed," all right.
Right.
It doesn't mean you're going to be able to always achieve it, but you certainly are committed to trying.
No, because we can't fix the boat. We can't do the grass.
Okay, so what's, so let's wrap this one up if we can, unless you have anything else. What are we looking at on this statement? Are we looking at then, "The city of Saginaw is committed to providing the highest quality service possible to ensure an inclusive and safe community in which to live, work, learn, and play"? Is that...
John, I'm not sure I need to think, I'm not sure with the word "committed" that we need the word "possible," is what I guess I'm saying. The highest quality services, you know, it's a commitment. Commitments, it's not a guarantee, it's a commitment. And you do the best you can.
So what do you think? What do you think? Annie, I haven't heard from you.
If we're going to change it to the highest quality, I think we need to include the word "possible," simply because I think there's what we would do for our citizens in a perfect world, and then there is what we would do, what we can do for our citizens to the best of our abilities with what we have. And I know, you know, I think that acknowledges that we recognize there is a difference between the two, unfortunately.
Well, in my opinion, though, current, high-quality services already suggest the same thing as the highest possible, highest quality service, the highest quality services possible. So if we would go that far, I don't think we need to change it at all. I'd leave it at high, the high-quality services. Just leave it.
Me too. That's the way I was thinking. Me too.
I mean, rather than make it more complicated, just leave it, you know? I only raised it because it was a question of degree. I'm okay with high-quality services. I'd rather have it left at that simple than try and make it more complicated.
And I think that relates back to my original question. How will we then use this? Where will it be? If it ends up this long instead of this long, we're limiting where we can use it. If it's a line on our stationery or on every press release, it's got to be compact.
I mean, I would like to see some portion of this, whether it's the mission statement or the values that we receive input from from the community. I would like to see some component in that as they walk into City Hall.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think you're going to see it, plans that we talked about is having this on some formal, very good-looking plaques or something like that, and our documents that we send out and everything, so it'll be, you know, always out there for the public to see.
And I'm going to send us the high quality. I'll go back and try to...
I would support it the way it is written.
It's pretty welcome.
How important is it to go from "high" to "highest"? Are we, are we right now providing high-quality service to our citizens?
Yes.
Are we providing the highest quality of service to our citizens? So what's going to change?
We've got restraints, plain, pure, and simple. I mean, the person that calls the police department to report their bicycle was stolen...
I agree.
...is not going to get the highest possible service, because the police have got to rank what they're going to respond to.
But if you put the highest, highest quality service, you've got the same answer. We can't respond to those bicycle things.
Well, that's why I think the word "possible" needs to be in there. Or we keep it the way it is, because I think the service that we provide is high-quality. Is it the highest? No.
I agree, let's leave it the way it is. Because if we're going to put limitations in, why put them in?
Stretch goals. The next time we do this, maybe we'll be able to say we're going to be as committed to providing superior services. The ultimate...
Okay, let's move on.
Let's leave it the way it is, on high-quality services.
Consensus, consensus then on the first statement, the city mission statement?
I do have one other question.
"The city of Saginaw is committed to providing high-quality service to ensure an inclusive and safe community in which to live, work, learn, and play." Any other questions?
Yeah, not a question, but an inclusive and safe community is really good, that doesn't talk about it being vital or strong or anything else like that.
Yeah, you're right, okay.
What about this being, you know?
We can test it if you want.
Okay.
Out in the concepts, out, you know, trying to not be redundant. So you will find things in the mission that aren't in the vision, but are wrapped up in the concept.
But I like, still like the word of inclusive, safe, and vital community, or something like that.
All right. Let's just, let's just keep this as a thought, and let's move on, and then we can come back to these as we go along. We're going to go to the core values, and we come up with, the committee, working very diligently, come up with these three headings and the wording underneath it. So we got diversity and inclusiveness. We appreciate and value the uniqueness of each individual. We treat everyone with respect and dignity. Sweet. You got a, under, you got a, go ahead.
I agree with that 100 percent. Thank you, Reverend.
I see nothing wrong with any of this.
Service accountability and responsiveness. We put our citizens first by establishing measurable performance goals, recognizing achievements, and responding to needs.
Can I take one more?
As much as possible.
For the people that work on the committee, there was a survey done, and that's how we came up with these. I just thought we should share that with them. These weren't words that we just pulled out of our hat.
Oh, no.
This was a survey that was sent out to the citizens, people who moved in. We even had an invitation where we invited individuals who moved from, to the area. We had them actually come in and tell us why they chose Saginaw. So they came up with this, along with some other citizens, because it was like on, what was it, Facebook or on our webpage? And people actually wrote in how they felt about Saginaw. And so we took the words, it was a lot of them, but we took the first highest, and that's how we ranked them, is how we wanted to put it on here. So I didn't want y'all to think...
That was a word map.
Yeah, the word map.
That's the word map that you see.
What, the eight words that appear as the three core values were in the top 10 of the words that were selected to describe Saginaw.
Yes.
And what we did was tried to put them together in terms of how they related to each other. Diversity was the number one. Inclusiveness, I believe, was number three. But diversity and inclusiveness go hand in hand.
Right.
Same thing with service, accountability, and responsiveness. Those might have been, you know, four, six, and eight, but we put them together because it made sense for them to go together. Same thing with unity, collaboration, and teamwork. Those may not have been, you know, seven, eight, nine, or six, seven, and eight, but they were, they were in the top 10, and they fit together.
I think our core values here work both for interactions with the citizens and management's interaction with staff. They conform the basis of an approach of customer service and also of our human resources. You know, a lot of recognizing achievement, well, that's internal. That's letting our people know how we're doing. But valuing every individual, that's every interaction the city has. And the third one quite often applies to us, maximizing resources and the partnerships. We, we set a lot of that tone of how we work with other groups around the city. So I think in these three things, we find the basis for a lot of, you know, we talked earlier under the mission statement about what can you take and give to all the departments so they can develop something? Well, every department can find something here to work with.
Absolutely. So I'm not going to drag it on any further. I mean, if you guys like these, and it looks good, then I'm not going to drag this on any further. We're at the point now then where our city mission statement, and let's remind ourselves, it's a working document, you know? And we'll bring this back to council for a formal vote on it. Once it's voted on, though, that becomes our current working document until it's changed. And if we need to, we can revisit it, and maybe we should periodically revisit it and say, "Hey, you know, can we do this?" And so we got something. This then allows us all to be really on the same page, you know? With our mission statements and our core values, we're all on the same page, and I think it works good. So be no changes to the core values. Are we set then on leaving the mission, the city's mission statement the same then for now? Any other further discussion?
Just go back to the point I made before, and that was, what kind of a community are we wanting to convey that we are? Inclusive and safe is good, but it seems to me there should be a higher element, and that's why I use the word "vital."
But if you go to the city here, it's not...
I know, but this is the one that the public is going to see first and foremost and regularly.
So what is your thoughts then? What are you trying...
I was just, the thought was to ensure an inclusive, safe, and vital, or some similar word, community. One that is something that people want to be here. Inclusive is good, safe is good, but isn't there more to our community than just those two things? Isn't it a special community? Isn't it one where people don't just feel safe, but they feel that there's a higher level of quality, of environment, of desirability?
Are we going back to the mission statement?
Yeah.
The clerk knows so she can go back to that.
I mentioned that where our core, under core values, where the council seems to be very together on that one there. We're back to the city mission statement compared to the city's vision statement. There's a mission statement and there's a vision.
I understand.
Okay.
But the mission statement, like I said, that's the one that you're talking about putting on plaques.
Well...
That's the one you're talking about putting on everything.
But they all go together? We're not just going to have a mission?
But people don't read everything. They're going to read this.
Well, I agree. No, I agree, they'll start it.
This is what they're going to look at.
Okay.
So the question becomes, do you want to put a higher level of desirability for the city than simply being safe and inclusive? If not, then fine. I think it would be better to have a higher level of desirability put in that mission statement.
I don't...
I use the word "vital," but that may not be the one people like. Vibrant, vibrant's another...
I considered the word "vital."
Or...
Vibrant.
Yes. Vibrant, that's even a better one.
Safe and vibrant?
Yeah.
What is vibrant? I just give...
It just makes you feel sunny and, you know, wonderful.
It includes all the thoughts of entertainment, education. It does, that's a, that's a good word.
You can do this. You could just, you know, if you need to, just give us a thumb over there.
You don't like that. You don't like, vibrant's a good word. I think it's better than vital, and I think it's a good...
So if I'm hearing it right, to ensure an inclusive and safe...
Well, just safe.
Inclusive, safe, and vibrant.
Yeah. I like that.
So, John, could you, John, could you tell me what a vibrant community is? Okay, thank you.
I think, no, no.
I guess, no.
Vibrant, to me, has choices.
Yeah.
You know, vibrant is, I don't have to do the same thing tomorrow I'm doing today.
Okay.
There's a choice. I go out and do something different.
All right. I like that, very good.
So...
Okay. Okay, okay. I like that.
Get him, implies a happening.
Something happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's very, really good, Annie.
All right.
Should have had you on the committee in the first place.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. All right. A consensus then of the council? Add that word? No, I can't, but clerk can. Clerk, would you read that? How would it read?
Well, there might be...
Community. Yes.
Inclusive, comma, safe, comma, and vibrant.
We'll contact S V S U English professor and make sure that we have the proper language.
I believe the third comma is what former Mayor Brown referred to as the Oxford comma, which is exceptionally important to have.
I see. All right. Let's move on then. Core values are good. We're looking at the city mission statement.
Vision.
The city vision. Yes, John, before we move on, go ahead.
The vision statement.
Why don't you read it then first as it's printed already?
First as it's printed?
Yeah, as it's printed, as it's being presented, okay?
The city vision statement, as the group came up with it, was, is, "The city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community by promoting neighborhood growth, stimulating business development and innovation, fostering entertainment and educational opportunities all through strong collaborations and private-public ventures."
I think you missed a comma.
I, well, I...
John, what's your thoughts after reading that now?
I find that to be somewhat awkward and stilted. And as I continued to look at the... And, and as I continued to look at the punctuation, I thought this, this isn't reading through smoothly. And so I changed things around a little bit. I can give you a version that basically uses all of the same language and changes the tense a little bit, and then I can give you the version that throws in a couple of extra Shall I?
You got the point.
All right. "Through collaboration and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters entertainment and educational opportunities." I think that flows a little bit more smoothly.
It does.
Now, let me read to you what I added.
Yeah.
It'll be the same basic thing with some additions. "Through collaboration and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood safety and growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters employment, entertainment, and educational opportunities for all." I added safety, employment, and for all.
Explain to me employment. How does, what is, is the city then to employ more people or foster employment?
Well, the city doesn't entertain people, the city doesn't necessarily educate people, but we can foster those opportunities, employment opportunities, entertainment opportunities, educational opportunities.
Fostering employment, entertainment, and other opportunities.
And it's, it's like Governor wannabe Shooty was saying, it's all about jobs, jobs, jobs. And what we can do to promote employment opportunities is, is for the overall benefit of the community. And I'm not married to this language.
No, no.
This, this, it was just a thought that I had as I was here working on it tonight.
Yep. And you'll have a copy of that in just a second. Mr. Morales went out to make a copy for us to take a look at that.
And I'm, I'm, I mean, safety is already present in the mission, so to add safety, I'm, I'm not sure we need to do that. And in addition to that, you know, do we, do we focus on neighborhood safety and kind of ignore commercial downtown safety, east? So I could very easily drop safety from there. But in keeping with that the live, work, learn, and play to foster employment, entertainment, and educational opportunities, throw the word employment in there, and then to, to, again, harp on this idea of inclusiveness for all. That we're not gonna discriminate, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to make, to make everybody happy.
Go ahead, Michael.
John, I like the way that it is.
Okay.
I think that, that includes everything, I think.
Okay.
I think we need to change the test. I like it when you read it without employment.
And without safety, neighborhoods, that, I
The first time.
Yeah, the first time.
What about for all?
Read it again.
"Through collaboration and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters entertainment and educational opportunities for all."
Instead of adding, adding the for all at the end, why don't you put it right at the front, right at the end of the first sentence? If that's the message that we're trying to convey, let's put that out there first.
I'm not sure it
Well, it would, it would, then, then we have to say something like, "For all of our citizens, comma, through collaboration and public-private ventures, the city will be." And I think that
That would be awkward.
Yeah. And, and as a practical matter, you know, for all is, is, I mean, that's one I think that's implied. That, that we don't need necessarily to throw that in there, to, to, we're telling everybody that we are going to promote, we're going to stimulate, we're going to foster.
If you wanna do that, the word everyone might be better than all.
If you wanna use
Yeah. I just, I, in some respects, I just, it's, it's not necessary.
You, I like, I like what you have. I'm okay with, I, I don't care for the word safety and growth, because I think it's already in the other documents, other, other mission statements so far. I, I'm fine with employment, because it's sort of, I mean, we want employment, we want to promote employment. We've got an S C C where we talk about all the time. We've got the trade unions, and we've got all kinds of things that we can do to work with, the schools and the house. So to me, that one's okay there. I'm okay with the for all, I'm okay without it, but I would delete the safety and word. And I do like the way it runs better this way than the original, because I agree, the original is stilted.
Stilted.
Yeah.
All right, so let's come up to a consensus here now in, in talking about this. As it reads now, the city vision statement is the city of Saginaw. And what you're saying then, I'm hearing, John, is let's start off, "Through collaboration and, and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will." Okay? Has everybody got on, on board with what John's saying there? Changing that, that
That, that changes the emphasis from who we are to what we are.
What we're doing, yeah. Okay. So I like that. I, 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 I think that works good. "Through collaboration and, and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood growth, stimulates business development
And innovation.
And innovation. And fosters entertainment and educational opportunities for all."
I think employment should be in there.
Well, but if we stimulate business development, is that not employment?
Well, that's a good point.
Just looking at the word fosters. And I wondered if the word furthers would work.
We were trying to come up with, with those action adjectives or
Promotes is another
Verb.
Promotes.
Without, without being redundant.
Yeah.
We, we had promotes, stimulates, fosters was, I mean, that came up. I know it's a, an Australian beer, if I'm not mistaken, but if there's a
You are right.
If somebody has access to, wants to pull up their thesaurus and find a
No, it just occurred to me was all
Press, they know these things right off the top of their head. What's another word for fosters? Enhances?
To me, to me, fosters right away means nurturing growth. Councilman Ball's been fostering these young people for years, and we, we know what that means, you know? And, and, and so, you know, fostering, and whether it's a foster home or whatever, it's fostering, it's making better. And that, and that, that's, that's, that's when I hear the word fostering means, you know, nurturing, making better, so. So, Madam Clerk, do we have anything right now that looks like we're very close?
I took out safety and the word and. Are we taking out employment? Is that decided?
I, I, council members okay with that?
I'm okay.
We have, we're okay with that, taking out that. So would you read that back then to us for a city vision statement?
"Through collaboration and public-private ventures, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters entertainment and educational opportunities for all."
Sound good? Everybody? Sound good? We can't vote on it. Okay, consensus? Tim, any, any thoughts on that?
Deb, thumbs up, thumbs down?
You, you play a big part of this, Deb, so we really want to hear what your thoughts are.
Well, I, I mean, I like all the components. The prepositional phrase, which typically not done, and the examples that we've seen have been
Throwing the prepositional phrase in the, in the middle of the sentence. "The city of Saginaw, comma, through collaboration and public ventures, comma, will be a welcoming community." That, I think, is, is grammatically correct. And I suppose if we're trying to set an example for our young people, we should pay attention to grammar. I mean, we're not the school district.
And we should relate all the quick words, say, "We will be a welcoming community."
And is that off the case?
You know, that makes it very clear. "We will be a welcoming community."
Well
I think we have to identify ourselves.
It does, city vision statement, it's already there. That's who we are.
I will say that. When we look at all the examples, some of them
Some of them say we, or our, so there, there are a lot of different
We is what I said, word, word, right.
You're welcoming community.
I, you know, I I kinda like the idea of starting it out with Saginaw, "Through collaboration and public-private ventures, will be." I mean, bang, right there in the very first word, who are we? Saginaw. Simply, and, and that
Another comma in there, Saginaw?
Saginaw, comma, has to be.
Through collaboration and public-private ventures.
Will be.
Will be.
Well, see, the whole concept
Thoughts on that one? Thoughts on that one? Will be?
Well, in fact, that works. Using just the word Saginaw, I think, works to identify this. It also fits with the word map. Saginaw is central to that. We don't say city of Saginaw across that.
Mm-huh.
In a lot of our promotional material, Saginaw is what is said, not city of Saginaw. City of Saginaw's kinda legal.
Okay.
Does that pass the grammar test?
Well, that, that sounds like a good one. It is really
We should ask the students in the back.
Saginaw. Yeah. So let's go with the, Madam Clerk, would you read that now, using the Saginaw, not the city of?
Saginaw, comma, "Through the collaboration and public-private ventures, comma, the city of Saginaw will be a welcoming committee."
Oh. Dropping, one more time for John. Let me, let me have John tell you one more time. Go ahead, John.
Saginaw, comma, "Through collaboration and public-private ventures, comma, will be a welcoming community that promotes neighborhood growth, stimulates business development and innovation, and fosters entertainment and educational opportunities for all."
Cause that Well, you, you know, that can come later. We'll do that later. Okay. I wanna thank the committee for hard work, and the citizens who are involved. This then, we'll go back, and Madam Clerk will come up with a final version for us to take a look at and vote on. Mr. Manager, possibly our next committee, our
What we'll do is we'll incorporate these changes and get you back fresh documents. And we've just completed the agenda, which you'll get tomorrow for the meeting next week, so likely would be on the October 9th city council agenda for approval.
So, are we gonna make this into like a flyer, the foldover? I mean, you know, instead of all of these sheets, will it just be like a flyer?
Mm-huh. Yeah. We can do that. We'll, we'll, let's
Okay. No, I was just asking, 'cause I'm like, this is too much paper.
Can we turn that over to our communications person and let
Projects for our
Yep. That'd be great. Yep. Sure.
I would like, I agree, and I'd like to see it out in the front hallway
Sure.
For people to see it when they first
Come in.
Come in.
Yep. We'll take a look at that?
Nice-looking plaque.
Council members, then I will, at a later date, after we approve it, we'll set up some council members that can start passing this on to our different boards and commissions also, so they understand.
We have a few recommendations. Oh, man.
And I, I, I think right after November 8, 2018, it'll be good. Council members, entertain a motion to adjourn. They moved this forward. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify aye.
All right.
Those opposed?